I would like to know why my name is in these reports. Yes, they're five years old, but they never should have been there unless you have a reason for them to be in here. Um, he does give a, he goes, um, I'll start from the beginning. Since I was not the chief of police during the aforementioned period and I don't have direct knowledge of why your name is in the report. I've talked to some of the Now, if there were concerns, there would be reports and that would be physical information that the city can get and report to me. This is why officers were coming into the neighborhood and putting your name on reports. And they started at this time and they ended at this time. It's something that the city should know. Names shouldn't just be put on reports. I mean, it's, my, my understanding is an officer wouldn't just put my name on a report. Somebody would have asked him, somebody would have, there would have been some kind of physical document. Unless really neighbors are calling individual officers up and saying, hey, we come into the neighborhood. But seven of them, so they were calling seven different times. And again, I know about seven. I don't know how, I don't know when this started. I don't know when this ended and it's important to me. Um, so I would like the city to look into this further, find out why.
So you, you read a portion of the, the chief's response. Why don't we get into the record? Make sure everybody hears the full response that the chief had. Just hold on Sally, Jimmy, if you can go ahead and just read the whole thing for us, please.
Okay.
Council members, the email from Chief Hodges says, Ms. Ness, since I was not the chief of police during the aforementioned period, and I don't have direct knowledge of why your name is in the report. I have talked to some of the officers who were here in that time period. Other than recalling that there have been concerns expressed by members of Darrell through, nobody has recollection of what may have specifically led to the directed patrol comments by officers. These reports are nearly five years old at this point. I consider this matter closed. Uh, to follow up on some of the, uh, comments from Ms. Ness. Uh, I, I would say it's not necessarily that there are any documents or reports, uh, that would be related to this. Because as, as you're all aware, uh, former police chief Jeff Potts attended all of the council meetings. Uh, issues related to Darrell Farukh and concerns that Ms. Ness has expressed in the past. Uh, or have been, uh, present at many council meetings, uh, in the listening sessions of the public comment. And, uh, it wouldn't surprise me at all if Chief Potts went back to staff and shared that information, which then gets shared with the police officers, uh, during their roll call of, of things that are going on. So I think that's, I think that's basically thing of what happened and.
Um, just to keep, keep, you missed a few other meetings. So you'll know that during this time in December, I filed my lawsuit at the beginning of December. Yeah, I wasn't in the area. There was no contact. I wasn't calling like a total dead period. So there would have been no reason. I mean, like, you know, why did they all sudden start in December? Unless my name has been on reports through this whole time and I didn't know about it. And then again, when did they stop? When did they stop putting my name on reports?
And to be clarified this last time Sally, a call, call record is not a report. Two different things. Call record is not a report.
All the reports, so I'm continuing to say report. That's, it's written right on the document. And again.
And we also, conversation last time Sally, you asked the question. The chief has answered the question. Basically, the answer is he doesn't know. They don't know.
And it, and it makes.
Is the answer.
And it doesn't.
It's a five-year-old issue and I'm not going to have our police officers spend time and energy and resources trying to figure out why your name was on a call record.
And it doesn't make sense. And again, when did it stop? I have seven, I found seven. I have, don't have all the police data. I have seven. When did it start and when did it stop? Why did it start? If it did stop, I don't know if it stopped.
Don't recall why it started Sally. And, and Jamie offered a very logical explanation. It could be our officers patrol over there often. They could have been talking with residents. Who knows Sally?
You don't put names on a report for no reason. You know, and I hear it saying that Darrell Farukh had said something. It specifically says in there, um, I'll read it again. Um, expressed, concerns expressed by members of Darrell Farukh. This is December. Again, I'm not in the area. I quit being in the area about September of that year because the police coming up to me while I'm on someone's private property. I'm totally afraid of police at this point. I don't know what's going to happen. I'm out of the area and it's like September or sometime. This is three months later. So why, again, but my name could have been on reports for this whole in time. So it might not have started then. I don't know when it started. And again, I don't know when it ended. I don't know if it was five years ago. I don't know if it's ended today. I do not know and I should know. I should know what the city is looking at me for. Why were they looking at me? It doesn't make sense. You know, if it was just once.
Ask specifically about why your name was on these call records, these seven call records. The question was why? The answer from the chief of police was he's talked to folks and they don't remember why. It was five years.
It's fine they don't remember why, but there should be documents to back it up. There should be data. A police officer just.
And Mr. Verbrugge offered a very reasonable explanation as to how the.
It's not reasonable when I'm not in the area since September of that year. That's not reasonable. So all sudden in December that they're driving in the neighborhood and it's not.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Catched any of my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, so you said that you had stopped being in the area in September. I think it was like November, December, January that.
It was in the middle of December.
Finish please. Your name was in there, November, December, January and the directed.
Not that I know of a November.
Ones that you provided.
No.
I don't remember the exact date.
December and January.
Still, that's like three months later, right? And what I will tell you Sally is that, um, our officers are aware of issues in neighborhoods and they don't just automatically end at a, a, a set time, right? And so when they're doing directed patrols, you may reference back to something they've been aware of for some time. So I don't know at what point they were, uh, they, they were suggested to patrol the area because of concerns. At what time they stopped. Um, you, you're aware of the JustFoya system. You can certainly make data requests and we would have to comply with those data requests. Um, but at this point in time, I'm not going to, as mayor said, have staff resources dedicated to going back and trying to find every report that has your name in it. Because from our perspective, um, there isn't anything to be served by this. Right? So I understand your concern. You've stated your concern here many, many times. As the chief says, he considers it closed. I consider it closed and it's going to be up to the council to direct me whether they consider it closed or not.
Um, and again, the times that they were driving, doesn't relate to any of the concerns. It wasn't on a Friday. It was odd times in the afternoon. It, it, it made no sense. And it was, you know, during December and January when it's cold. So I'm not going to the park with the kids at that point. It made no sense. None of it makes sense. It should make sense. Talking about resources, not wasting resources. An officer driving into the neighborhood, putting my name on a report because they requested it? Again, concerns that they had, what concerns did they have? I should have a right to know.
Sally, we're, we're over time now. We're over time now. Sally, the bottom line here is the police chief, the city manager. And unless I get a pushback from any members of the council, like this, this matter is closed. This matter is closed.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, we don't as citizens have the right every single time to understand every single police action that ever happens. I have police officers roll through my, my neighborhood all the time. I don't stop them and demand to know why they're there. Like, that's just not how it works. And so.
If you aim is on a report.
It's not on a report. It's on a call record and I've.
It's on a call record.
Number times. There's a directed, you know what? You should go out with the police one day. You should go ride along and you should sit in the roll call. Because then you would understand what they're given when they go through roll call, when, what they're given as directed patrols and why they're given those directed patrols. They're given for a myriad of reasons. They're given for reasons like, hey, there's been conversations in the, in the area. Hey, we're, this thing is under construction and there's a lot of equipment there. Run through those patrols because there could be more.
And I've got data requests for all of that. And I haven't gotten any roll call that says my name on it. None.
Perfect.
Well, then, then you have.
Tell them it's out there.
Why do, why are there seven?
Sally, Sally, this matter is closed.
So it doesn't make sense.
This matter is closed Sally. Thank you.
Looks like Aaron.
Ah, the timing might be perfect. Uh, Aaron?
Yes.
Your, your timing is perfect, Aaron.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Aaron and Azumia?
Azumia.
Azumia, thank you. Uh, you two are up next. If you would like to come forward, you're, you're right on time because we've got perfect timing for you.
We got a couple of our techs also with us. Uh, if you can, uh, give them a minute or so.
Okay. Oh, good evening. The way this works, uh, this is an opportunity to bring your concerns. Uh, you have a conversation with the council. Tell us what you're concerned about. Don't be surprised if we ask questions for clarification or, or have a conversation with you about this. And we're, we're trying to fit a bunch of different people in this evening. And so you've got maybe six, seven, eight minutes or so, and then we'll have to get on to someone else. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the chance to come in here and see you guys. Um, we're having a serious issue with, um, uh, environmental inspector named Mike Tyson. And he seems to, um, uh, he seems to have targeted our business ever since I took over this property. And it hasn't, it's relentless. He hasn't let off. Uh, we're doing nothing wrong. We're, um, we have done a really nice job with the property. I am sure you guys have probably driven past it. Um, if there is any issues, Mike Tyson needs to come directly into the office and talk to me. He does not need to be like a bully, like a bulldog, running around to all these bays that are, that I have techs working in that have customers around. And it makes my techs also very nervous when he comes around. He needs to politely address whatever concerns he's got. Come into the office, talk to me. I am boots on the ground for whatever is going on, on this property. We, we, um, I, I, I just think Mike Tyson is the reason why my business, gas business, the convenience store business has not gotten off the ground. Because he seems to, every time we comply with what he sends me in an email, he seems to come up with something new. You know, constantly pushing the goalpost away from completion, from, from making it happen. And this is a big concern. I have been in this location for almost two years now. And we have, we're doing a great job with the repair facility. But we would like to get the gas business off the ground. We'd like to get the convenience store off the ground. We have a lot of neighborhood people that love what we have done to this place. We put up the fence. He wanted a fence. We put up a fence. He wanted landscaping. We did that. He wanted the lighting to work properly. We did that. And where at the, at the last couple items that weights and measures, uh, of state of Minnesota, weights and measures has to complete for us. And we're, we're trying to do that portion of the completion for what they want me to do with the gasoline and the tanks and the dispensers and the calibration. All that, we're working with weights and measures department now. When that's done, I hope we're at the end of the tunnel to.
I appreciate that and I, I appreciate, I, I know the work that Mike is doing and he does it at, with businesses across the city. And I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I understand, you had a conditional use permit that was issued a couple of years ago.
Yes.
And then it's been modified a couple of times since.
Yes.
And the deadline was October 1st to have gas and convenience store open. Is that correct? Um, to meet the conditions of the conditional use permit. Is that correct?
I, I do not know because I just talked to Mike last week and he says, I, I told him that I cannot help it that the weights and measures is taking a little longer to get me the certificate to open. It's beyond my control. And Mike says, okay, well, keep plugging away. That's, but you may be right, sir, with.
Mr. Verbrugge, could you offer some clarification?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members and Mr. Aaron. Uh, appreciate this just for the benefit of the, yeah, just for the benefit of the other council members.
Sure.
Um, the, some of the information regarding you being here was shared with the mayor, but the other council members don't have it in the background. Um, so this is, this is a property that, uh, has a conditional use permit. And, uh, I have a communication from May from our environmental health staff to you and to, uh, your attorney at Lorcan Hoffman that lays out the, uh, the issues that needed to be remedied or resolved in order for the CUP to be invented. Um, and the May letter said that the lighting and security, um, complete all lighting work according to approved lighting plans by October 1st. Uh, in bold, it says lighting work must be completed prior to restoring gasoline sales and C store service. Um, gas and C store service, uh, restoring those sales by October 1st. Gasoline sales and C store service may not commence until the lighting work is completed. There's also an issue with the storage container back in May. Um, so it said, remove the storage container from the premises by October 1st of 2024 as well. So I'm, I'm not aware if all of the issues have been resolved. Um, and so it certainly would, uh, be interested in a conversation either, uh, with my staff or our environmental health manager about, um, the behavior of the specific inspector and things he may be doing that, that you perceive as being, um, intimidating or threatening. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but this is pretty standard. Uh, when we have, uh, issues that we're working through to have deadlines and then to have our inspectors make sure that they're going back out to the properties. Conditions have been, uh, resolved by the deadline. You focus real hard here on trying to get people into compliance. And if, if he's out there frequently, my guess is it's because he's, he's trying to do what we do with businesses across cities, get them into compliance.
Absolutely. Um, I just, again, Mike does not find something wrong. He will find something else wrong. We have nothing to do. I don't know, sir, if you have my recent, uh, email that I forwarded to you and the mayor, um, regarding the street parking, people parking on the street, uh, for days. We have nothing to do with street parking. Enforcement of the street parking is not on us. You, not even on Mike Tyson. It, it is really on the police department to, to, uh, address the street parking. But Mike's came into our, our property, addressed every one of these guys, uh, at, at the, at the, uh, service base. I mean, we're not responsible for the street issues. Again, he pointed the finger at us. These are the kind of things that make my guys nervous, that make me very upset because we're trying to comply. All he's got to do is call, he's got my number. He's, all he's got to do is say, Eric, I'd like to meet up with you to address this issue. And I will make myself available. He doesn't need to go to these guys because they don't have the answers for him. Um, I, I'll let, uh, Zome is, uh, he's also an immigrant, just like I am. Um, Zome is in charge of a couple of the technicians there. Hopefully maybe he can shed some light as to how he feels.
I, I would appreciate that. I, we, one more group that we'd like to get in. So we'll give you just a couple of minutes here and maybe we, we can continue this conversation as we go. Uh, because this is, I, I think a lengthier conversation than what we might have time for this evening. Okay? So, uh, a couple more minutes, why don't you just fill us in?
Good evening. Oh, yeah, we just started the shop about six months ago after my career, uh, serving. And then my brothers in African community, they're new to America. So I've been helping the African communities to stand on their feet. And instead of just working for $12 or 15, whatever the wage is, to start with the skill that they're bringing from outside country. So that's what my, uh, role is in my community. But, um, when I'm bringing the workers, uh, to work and they get bothered, I, I'm not in the shop myself. But these people, some of them don't speak English. My people, they don't speak English. And so I just don't want to do too much pressure on them when they come, enter the country new. We all, majority of us probably know what happened in Afghanistan three years ago. And so a lot, a lot of my guys, uh, they were soldier, they were serving and a lot of different things. So they're traumatized already. So for that kind of respect to give both side, you know, Mr. Eric, as the ownership of the business, we're subcontractors. So we just don't want to have this problem coming every day. If there's anything, why not solve that problem? So we could all live peacefully and have our businesses grow in different ways.
So I, I agree and, and I'm, I'm going to, we're going to move on, but I just want to leave you with this. Mr. Verbrugge is correct. Our, our staff, the general culture that we've tried to instill here is to try and get to yes and trying to help businesses succeed. Ultimately, we want to have businesses to succeed, to work closely with the neighbors, to work closely with the community, to be part of the community in ways that, that meet the requirements of the city, to meet city code, to meet just the expectations of what we're trying to do. And, uh, we also ask our inspectors to, to do it in such a way that we can continue to move forward. And so what I will, I will ask of you folks is perhaps we can continue this conversation next time? If you'd, if you'd be willing to come back or maybe I'd be, you know, we'd be happy to sit down and, and discuss this further. Uh, Mr. Verbrugge has talked, uh, about, uh, our environmental health staff and, and the work that they do and to try and figure out the best way to forward on some of these issues. But I would also encourage you, um, I, I know that there are some very specific things that are kind of laid out. Check those boxes just as soon as possible and get that work done and keep moving it forward. Because, yes, as it, it was a mess two years ago. Can't, I won't argue with that at all. And it looks much better now. And, and I can look, I, I can imagine it looking much better when there's a, a working gas station and a convenience, there's convenience store there as well. So.
I, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, for the council members. The address is 1700 East Old Chalk B Road. So it's just to the west of the strip mall. Uh, that's it. Old Cedar and Old Shock.
Yeah. Gentlemen, thank you for being here with us this evening.
And we'll, we'll touch base with our staff environmental health and we'll make sure that Lynn Moore, the environmental health manager follows up.
There's nothing more that we would like to do but to comply with the issues.
Thank you. Thanks. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Being here.
Have a good night, guys.
Thanks, you too. Uh, Dory, Brandon and Brian?
Yeah, Brandon will be here.
And if you could identify yourself for the record, please.
Yeah, Dory Sean again.
I'm Brian Lawler.
Brian, thanks for being here tonight. Please, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, we live in Cobble Hill Apartments, uh, 200 West 97th Street. Uh, and what we're here to talk about, and I'll give you more detail in a minute, uh, is to complain about Tommy's Car Wash, opened on 98th Street, um, right across from our apartment building. Uh, there are two other apartment buildings, uh, in the strip. Uh, it's a long block between, uh, Blaisdale and Pleasant. So there's a lot of buildings being affected. They're apart, they're residential. I, my personal feeling is I think the city made a mistake putting, allowing that kind of business there because there are other businesses, Ace Hardware, Pierce Ski, et cetera. It causes no problem. Of course, my, my wish would be that they would leave, but I have some suggestions later that I'll talk about. So here's the, the upshot of the complaint is for our people, and Brian is going to talk about it a little more detail because his apartment is right, uh, pretty much across from the car wash. So when the people, um, and there's 36 apartments in our building too. Uh, and so when the cars come into the car wash, I'll just paint a picture for you. Uh, their lights, um, the, the, their headlights come into our building. This is after dark, of course, because the way the gate is set up, it's not facing 98th Street. It's facing 97th. So they come into the gate and then they turn. And so then their, their lights come into our building and into the bedrooms and the living rooms of our, uh, apartment, apartments. Then when they make the turn, they go into the car wash. The problems with the car wash is the noise pollution. Because they're constantly doing, pull your car forward, do this, do that. And that's before they enter. So if they close the, the door, this is one quick solution. And then start at the, the, um, this directions, it'd be one thing. The other thing is when you, and I've gone into this car wash because they've given us free car washes. I've been at different car washes. The lights are just incredible. There's the flashing lights, continual flashing lights, which I've never seen in a car wash before. I mean, some directional lights, but these are just, it's, it's terrible. And again, it goes into our apartments, into our windows. And we have floor to ceiling windows in the living room. So we, we have a problem. So, um, let me see if I got all of the things, uh, the car lights, the, the lights, the flashing lights, um, the noise of the instructions. Uh, there's also a traffic problem because that street that goes between, uh, Blaisdale and Pleasant was already having some traffic because of the business. Now there's more traffic, uh, coming and there's no stop sign at, uh, at the end of 97th Street. So, um, but I'm, I was saying before that there was no problem with the other businesses. We weren't having problems with them. So, uh, the, the traffic problem, we already lost one of our pets and we weren't having problems. There's kids in the building, in our building, and they walk on the street. There's the buses, the school buses also come down. And so there's a lot of kids and parents walking. So again, the increased traffic is causing, uh, is, is caused by the car wash. Okay? Because the other businesses are not producing this kind of thing. So, um, I will tell you that people are starting to move out. Uh, premier management is the property manager. They've already talked to the city. I guess the city just blew them off and said, uh, business gets its way, is from what I understand. Uh, the other thing is I did call the environmental health department. I talked to Mike. I, I don't know his last name. Maybe he's the same person this other person's talking about. He said he would go out and talk to Tommy's and see the situation. So, uh, basically, unless you have some questions, that's from me. Brian is going to tell you how, how he lives with it every day. And then I have.
Quickly and very quickly, because I know Mr. Verbrugge has, uh, something to add here as well. I think he's got some information. We do need to get downstairs for our council meeting.
Yeah.
Very quickly, if you could.
I'll, I'll be brief. Um, so I've, I've lived there for three years, first couple of years. There was no, it was a very calm neighborhood, Loomington neighborhood. Um, I noticed the effect, uh, weekend mornings when I'm making my coffee, the music and the instructions start and it's repetitive all day. Uh, if you can imagine if we were listening to commercial right now, coming on every five minutes, it would be disruptive and it just, it's not, it's less than ideal. Uh, I think there is a way to either reduce the, the volume that's used. I mean, it doesn't address the lights, but at least the volume of the, of the instructions and the music. Um, that would be appreciated if we could do that.
Okay. Verbrugge, something to add here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, is it Seanigan? Is it, how do you say your last name? Seanigan? Thank you. Um, the, the last information that I have related to Tommy's is from May of this year when we had another, uh, resident concern. And at that time, council members, uh, our environmental health staff, uh, conducted a one-hour noise survey for the noise complaint. Um, and that was for the car wash, the vacuums and music. And all were within the city noise code, uh, with the note that they, um, they did require, our staff did require that they turn down the air dryer blower motors to 50% of operation. Um, and then the, um, car wash owner was required to submit an engineering, an engineered noise study, uh, with the car wash at full operation, vacuums. Now, I'm not aware of what, uh, whether they've complied with that or, or what the outcome of that was. And the information about the lights into the apartments is new information for me. So it sounds like you've talked with our environmental health staff. Uh, we'll follow up with them again tomorrow and, uh, see if there is any, uh, enforcement or if there's any concern about the operation being outside of, of what's required by their operating permit. And then we'll have our staff follow up with them as well.
And can I just make a quick, I know you have to go.
Yep.
Okay, so, I mean, uh, Brian's suggestion was good. Um, they can put signs up. No, there's a, there's a, a car wash of holiday. They do not have the, the, the instructions. They just have signs saying, pull your car forward. Why can't they do that? They could do that. There's one thing. They could put up more signs. There's one thing. They could put up more signs so that would stop the noise volume. The other thing is, I think they should build a wall. If they build a wall, there's plenty of space to do so, because there's a, a greenway. They could build a wall. If they built the wall, it would, it would basically block the light and the noise from coming into our apartments. So I think the city should seriously consider that.
Okay.
And they can afford it. That's what I would say.
And in, related to an earlier comment, it's unlike the other businesses there. You're exactly right. But it is a permitted use according to the zoning within that area.
I know.
And if we hadn't, if we had rejected them, your city would have been in the, would have been in court and would have lost because we did not have a legitimate reason to reject them.
Yeah. And I would just say, I used to work for a city government, Madison. Something can be in code. That doesn't mean it's good for the residents.
Are you with you there?
Probably heard that over and over again.
Thanks. Thanks for being here tonight. So Mark and our friends from Restore the Nine, I, we, I don't know if we're gonna get to you tonight. We've got to get downstairs. We're already late. Join us again next week. I mean, we, we see you every week. So I'm sure you'll come back again and we'll have the opportunity to continue the discussion. All right. So, great. And Mr. Mayor, if you could, let me give a heads up to
Yeah, call ahead, please.
Mercer, so that we get you on the list.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a sort of a last minute thing. It's on me. I, I, I guess, actually, I'm on the list for the next one.
Perfect.
Right on center.
Yeah. All right, council, I look for a motion to adjourn this evening. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. We'll see you downstairs. Thanks much for everybody coming in tonight.